You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
At 5:30 I'll call the meeting to order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for July 3rd. It's our meeting.
Motion made, seconded, and all in favor say aye.
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 Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll do my first.
Okay. What's that?
There's a typo on the motion. You're correct. Swansea is not public.
You test me a lot, Billy. I'll get you kicked off.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public input.
I have a question still. Probably a couple of months ago, Beverly said that I wasn't mentioned in the minutes. And then Beverly said that, well, I'll speak, which made sense. But then fast forward, probably two months later, I actually spoke. I wasn't in the minutes, or even being here. And then the other question, if I asked you about how active they were, and spoken it, the minutes weren't that active. I'm kind of concerned about the fact that we're doing minutes, and if they're not that active, which we represent, what's taking place here? Why aren't we...
Well, the high points, I think, Bill.
Actually, I would say that all the communities that I've visited through planning boards, zoning boards, or just like them for different projects, Beverly's minutes are the most detailed of any. And many of them simply say discussion. So I think that's a valid question, but they are very accurate.
Every meeting but the last two. And I've seen other people sitting here that haven't spoke either that have been in the minutes. And I've been here every meeting but the last two. It's just embarrassing.
Squishy wheel, Mark.
Want to add to that, Jim?
Yeah.
The minutes reflect Jim said no?
I would just, because I have to, sorry. But next time you're telling them, it's an interesting history, is to go in and look at the selectmen's minutes since Beverly's been here, and then look at the selectmen's minutes before.
I'm not blaming him, I'm just...
We're gonna have to get a revolt thanks to Beverly.
Back in the day, the administrator or the secretary, or whatever you call it. Secretary, secretary. Yeah, selectman's secretary, something like that. She would take the minutes around the meeting.
So the law is that the essence of the meeting being recorded is not supposed to be verbatim, like in court. And it's usually if the subject matter is covered, sometimes the smaller issues are not covered, and it's okay according to the law. But we'll put you in if she's this time.
And we'll try and get a camera to pan to get an audience to view. If nothing else, consideration of old business. Do you want to do one line extension for about a year?
Or do you want to wait a few minutes?
Okay. Wilson Pond, concern?
So this was just came up in a discussion at last week's meeting about boat launch properties. So I did do a little bit of research. Of course, Pishing Gane has created this portal and shows all the different accesses to ponds. They do label swimming as a use of that property. So maybe just some improved signage would help. We had someone camping over there a few years ago, so they had moved on. I verified that myself.
I would apologize if they hadn't.
I appreciate that. So maybe some additional signage would help.
Can we make the sign saying no dogs?
Well, we'll have to confirm what the rules are and put them on the signs.
It says no dogs on the sign, yeah?
Okay, it does say that, okay. There's a few different ones.
Like the way you're talking about.
The boat launch.
Boat launch. People actually camped at you, they said that?
No.
No, she camped for me.
Boom dog.
They actually parked there, and how long did they stay? Listen, Billy.
What's that?
Listen.
I was gonna say, I'm actually probably... So, yeah, just for running across the board. And then I did pull up some information because there was a discussion about the town properties around the pond. So there is that one, and had at least two other properties or railways, and then one that Mike and I worked most of Mike, but looked a lot at, that we don't really think the town owns, although the new tax maps do show it as a town.
I've asked CAI to present any information they have that they found that we did not.
Yeah, I figured.
Is that the lot at the end of Pashir Road? Or is that the number 71?
It's between Redman and number...
That's the access, I think, for a lot of people on the pond.
For some people on the other side, Boyd and others have it on their...
But that's also one that has been obstructed, so people can't use it.
What's that? It is being obstructed, but we can't do anything about it because we don't do it same. So the only thing what we did do is, is at one point we had Mr. Premon out there. I had Mr. Deller both state for the record that he recognized he did not own it. That time Officer Tranlon made that part of the record. I made sure that that police report went into each and every affected property file with maps and someone who has a history of the whole thing, so that he could never potentially claim some sort of adverse possession or something else. But yes, he continued to make it his own, unless one of the neighbors who actually has claimed to use of it says something or does something, and I don't know what we feel about it.
It gets broadened in conversation for that.
I bet it does.
Then the other piece was about jake breaks and noise ordinance. So I did put in there a copy of the noise ordinance. From what I've heard from other towns, jake breaks are both hard to police. You have to be able to hear it. And then if you did try to enforce it, if someone potentially caused an accident, it's a law not using my jake brakes, it could be a liability issue, so.
Eric, fire station advisory committee chair, Jay Ward.
Actually, a couple of other members of the committee were here tonight, too.
Oh, without you guys.
State your name for the minutes.
They're not here for that.
They're here in official capacity.
In official capacity. So thank you, all three of you, for agreeing to come to our first meeting on Monday, 5:30. These folks don't know it yet, but we're gonna go look at the fire stations on Tuesday, the 23rd. We have time to determine, and we're gonna be off and running. I want to share with you, I just want to be sure that this is something you're comfortable with. I have here, this is an agenda draft, and the beginning of it is a survey. And I just want to make sure that the language is acceptable to you, all three of you. And because I want to make sure that we're doing it for the right reason.
Jay, and your bullet points, is that part of what you're asking us to look at?
No, I just wanted the mandate. I'm not asking you to tell me how to run the meeting, or what we're gonna have on the agenda. I just want the first part, where I'd say the given, and then I'd say the mandate. I want to make sure that wording is acceptable to you, because I'm presenting it as though it is, and I want to be sure that everyone in the committee knows that. And I'm expecting you to say something similar when you're there, charging the committee with what you expect. And if there's a disconnect, I want to know now, better than later.
I think it's great. Okay. Should we know? Cutler's School is out of the picture? We eliminate that?
We have to, because the timeframe is such that by the time we know what's gonna happen with Cutler's School, because the school district owns it, and the same with Wilcox, by the time we know that that's in the picture, it's not even something we... We have to wait in line to see if a charter school wants to buy it. So both those properties are not really on the table. I just want to get that out in front, everybody who might want to work on it. So, I mean, there are other things that, you know, you'll hear about as we go through that we're looking at. We're gonna look at just about everything. We're gonna start from scratch with no preconceived notion, and we're gonna go through things. What about this? What about this? What about that? And as we work, we're gonna eliminate this as a never done work. We need more information here. We need... That's the plan. We're gonna start with something. I'm gonna show you and ask for your help on some of those issues as well. And you use some homework for me, okay? But that's the plan. The plan is to start with everything, and will it down to something that we can present to you with confidence as, you know, one or two proposals that we need to consider. That's the idea. And that's the plan that I have going into this. And then when I meet with the committee, all 20 of us, we will hash that out, and maybe they'll change my mind about how we're gonna go. That's where I'm approaching this, going into next Monday.
Are you concerned with the amount of people you have in the committee?
Well, I was at first. I was at first. I had one idea that I thought I'd break this into subcommittees and stuff like that. And then I said, no, I've taught classes this large before, and I don't have a manager of a room that big. And we're gonna meet, and we're gonna have breakout sessions during the meeting. So we're gonna go up, you know, groups can go here, groups can go there, groups can go there. We're gonna then get back together and share what we've talked about. I want to make sure everybody has a voice. So you can't have a voice if you're in a 20-person discussion. You can have a voice if you're a five to six to seven person group. You can talk, you can share ideas, and then you can share with a big group what those ideas are. And that's how we'll do it. It might be a little less efficient, but we're not sure all 20 are gonna show up each meeting, anyway. There are already three people who may not make Monday's meeting. And there are five people that respond to me, and I have to call them and find out if they're coming. So we could potentially only have 12 there on Monday. So we're just gonna have to see how it all goes.
Yeah, that's one of my big concerns. And I'm actually surprised that Bill, you know, pushing the lives committee like this, because, you know, when we even brought up five selectmen, and Bill was against big crowds of trying to get something known and have that, so I was concerned, because I can agree with you.
I see a couple of advantages to the 20. Number one, we have a lot of diverse points of view, a lot of ideas, and perhaps some creativity that exists there. And then, second of all, we have 20 ambassadors to the community to promote this proposal. So it's the people and their connections in the community that are also present. And they can say, I've sat there and I discussed all these things, and we came up with this, and that's the best way to go, and you gotta trust me, buddy, you're my friend, and, you know, you gotta trust us, this is the way to go. So it's one of the ways to get the word out, to get people convinced in how this goes.
Are you gonna narrow this down to one thing? This is what, when you bring this to us, are you gonna bring us one idea? Are you gonna bring... We narrowed it down to three different locations.
I don't know. It could very well be two. There may be one that's more expensive than another. It could be, you know, I don't know. I'm gonna show you in a second when I get to it. I'm gonna show you where I started from. I'm starting with a three-page document of ideas and questions and stuff like that. And I'll talk about that in a second. I'm planning, I'm squeezing in 10 to 11 meetings between now and your second meeting in November, November 13. And I'm hoping that most of us can make those meetings, and we can get some things done. We may have to meet more often to get some of these questions answered. We may have to bug Mike and other people to get the information we need. And hopefully, hopefully we'll get that, but it's gonna be more. We have a shared Google folder, which I have some resources that Michael gave me, things like the fire calls map, the list of town-owned properties, things like that. Do you folks want access to that shared folder? It's not something we're using to communicate. It's simply a place where you put documents in. And I just want you to know where I'm approaching from. And then finally, I have this document, which is, the rest of the committee will see on Monday, but it is a list of things, questions that I have had since I became aware of the situation, and then talking to people around town, things I know are out there in the wind, about things that relate to the fire station, how things might happen. And we're gonna work our way through this document as a committee, but I wanted you folks to look at it, and if in the next few days you could send me suggestions, additions, maybe answer some of the questions on here that are, I don't know about, but you know the answers to. I just, I'm not saying I'd be part of the committee. I'm just saying, I'm already able to run mostly by Michael. So, you know, I got this input, I'm asking for your input also. Okay? So this is just homework. It's homework. And there are a few extra things I'd like you to look at. And that's all I have.
Easy peasy, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I compliment you for taking this on. You've got a big challenge ahead of you.
I got good help, too.
What's that?
I got good help.
Yeah, and I think you do. And Bill told us that you'd be a good chairman. Already I see that you already dot in your eyes and crossing your t's, and you're getting ready for it, so I think Bill made a good choice. And good luck, and any way I can help, I'm there. And I'll try to show up as much as I can to listen in.
You won the role.
Good choice, though.
You made it.
I agree. You made it, I agree. But it seems like he's on the road.
From the perspective of the latter part of November, what do you envision that presentation to be from a completion standpoint?
Well, it all, a lot depends, Bill. You and I talked a little bit about this, in terms of if we have any major changes to a design, that, you know, how much lead time an architect might have to have to put something together. Don't know about that, but we talked about whatever we propose to you would eventually have to go to some sort of public meeting, or some sort of presentation to people interested in the town, and work our way that up through more.
Do you think there, I know it's awfully hard, so, but I'm just wondering, do you think there would be an opportunity prior to... When do we have to complete the public hearings?
It'd be noticed basically by the end of the year.
I mean, too?
Well, it depends. Sometimes we combine them all on one. We have done separate volunteer hearings.
So I'm just wondering, from a pricing perspective, an estimate, do you think, I know this is hard, but would you be planning to have that estimate in hand prior to the end of the year?
It depends on whether we can find the resources to help us to the pricing. You know, I mean, that's, I'm not an expert on that. Maybe there's some people on the committee can help us with that. Maybe there's people at town hall, maybe, you know, who can help us with some of the estimates. It also depends on what kind of design and plan we end up with, so.
Have you considered whether you need a budget?
I don't think the committee needs a budget, other than being able to use the town copier to make copies of this or anybody.
Black and white only.
Yeah. But I don't, I mean, I'm assuming that if I need something, that I would go to Michael and ask him if there's any funds that he could invest in me, but I don't have a thought about it.
Yeah, 'cause if he needs something, he can go to Michael, and Michael can come to us. And we meet enough that we're gonna try to...
Well, I can't imagine, other than what resources the town already has already that I would need, but then I'm not sure where we're going.
You're gonna do some field trips, huh?
Well, we're gonna go look at our present fire stations, because not everybody knows what's in the present fire station. So we should look at that and see what a fire station consists of, and Eric is gonna show us around, so.
Maybe even look at other ones, and other towns.
Maybe, but, you know, there's some pictures of somebody others in that folder that, Michael gave me all the stuff related to the latest plan, and some that involves trips and pictures of other fire stations and so on. So there's some stuff in that shared folder that the committee has access to. And if we decide we need to go look at some others, that's great. Right now, we haven't even decided, you know, how big the thing is gonna be, and how much, because nothing's been decided.
How did they get to the executive part of that? How are you gonna get to the executive part of that we were talking about?
Well, I'm not sure I am. Here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna have all these meetings. It may be that not everybody's been here. And we'll get to the point where, we'll get to the point where there are going to be key members who show up all the time, who are working on all this stuff. And it may be the executive committee is a variable number of people who are the regular shoppers, the regular people who invest in it. I've already had one committee that were saying, well, I only agreed to come one night into the script. Only agreed to come one meeting if I don't like what I see, I'm not gonna come back. Okay.
So you're feeling that this committee's gonna downsize? Probably, we're at 20, you think you'll end up at 15?
Maybe. By definition, I don't know, who knows? I mean, one guy who was, apparently sent an application, and told me he never applied, and he dropped out, so I don't, we're 20, instead of 21, just, you know. And I've got these five people who haven't responded about whether they're coming, I'm gonna be or not. I think two or three are definitely gonna come, but there may be a couple who aren't. So it's one of those things, until we actually get into it, I won't know. And so if there is a need to have a working group who are gonna work on the proposal once we get there, we're gonna, your job between this meeting and next meeting is to meet privately and come up with something that you can show the committee, we'll do that. A task force, basically, that's a segment of the committee. And that, I think that's what you were talking about, is having some people who would actually put together the final thing.
Yeah.
And really work on that. And that may be what we...
Maybe you don't need it, like you said.
But maybe that's what we need. Maybe we need, because, you know, too many editors is a problem when you're trying to make a document. So the more voices we have, once we get to a certain point, the more difficult we'll have. So it may be that somebody needs to draft something, and then we all pick it apart and put it back together.
Very true.
So with roughly two weeks between meetings, we have time to have some task forces meeting between and so on.
Are your meetings always coming on a Monday?
No, because everyone's not available every Monday, and we have a meeting schedule that's almost finalized now. I have a little bit of questions, more questions to ask the committee about their availability and so on. I don't want to disenfranchise anybody on purpose. So I want to find out when they're available, when they're not. But Beverly's gonna take minutes, and she's a crucial part of the committee, so we are limited at some meeting times. So we shall see. And we're all prepared to work without her, too, if we have to.
All good?
Good job, Jay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, Jay. Thank you.
See you Monday, Jay. And I'm gonna take off.
5:30, right?
5:30?
Here.
Here. I don't know, upstairs or downstairs, but...
Upstairs.
Upstairs.
The way you have to deal with columns.
Good.
Nice job.
Well, thank you. Most of you folks here. Be good, brother.
Should we jump ahead to new business? Job description, heavy equipment operator? Consensus. You have a motion?
Either way.
I'm making a motion. I'm making the motion for that.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, to approve the technical operator job description. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye's have it. Woodcombe Hall tanking contract award?
No, there wasn't anything really in there on the whole description. So we issued a request for proposals in June. They were due back, I think around the 4th of July. We did not receive any proposals. Joe and Jimmy have been working on trying to draw off some additional proposals, which we did receive two. There are significantly more than what we had budgeted, so we had, I think it was like 17,000 or 18,000. I don't know if you remember, Mr. Camaro, how much it costs to paint the hall back in 2017? I think it was around 17,000 or 18,000. Now the two prices we got are 57,000 and 38,000. So I think we're gonna take a step back and maybe just do the front, and look at doing the repairs that we talked about for the garage building.
Do you want me to talk a little about it?
Yeah, please do.
So we met with the two guys. First guy claims, and they were concerned with lead. So we did test it. It is lead paint on here. So we have to do the restrictions of lead paint, we have to...
Jimmy, the lead paint was all taken off when they, in our last paint job, we had it stripped down to the clapboards, and they collected all of the lead paint. So what's on here is not lead paint on the outside of the building.
So the first guy claims he took a chip and went and tested it. My suggestion to Joe was that we have a guy that works for the town that is certified to check for lead. So I asked Joe to have him tested, too, so he could get a second test. He claims he took. So my question, Mike, was, well, we know we painted seven years ago, so why would there be lead, right? So I said, did you pull an old chip off? Is it like layers back? And he claims yes. So they're not talking about stripping it, but they have to lay plastic out, they have to have a containment, and then take all the loose stuff off, contain it, put it in a container. They all have to wear hazmat and mask, a suit, to do it. So that adds to the price, but I don't think it adds that much to the price. But I do agree with you, Mike. I saw it was filled, and I said, wow, I'm surprised that we didn't know there was lead. So we are gonna get it tested again to make sure they just didn't say that.
Mark, Mark Smith, who lives on South Winchester Street, is the guy that did it. And I was here most of the time, and he really did a clean job of taking the lead off this building.
So you're saying this whole thing was beer wood?
It might be a couple of spots, maybe.
See, that's where he might have chipped from, I'm thinking that, you know, he might have took a chip.
But to do the full lead nonsense again is just ludicrous. I mean, maybe you should talk to an expert like Sharon, who could probably tell you more, but we, Sharon was right on mark every minute on what he was doing, and what he was stripping, and how he was taking care of the building on the outside. And there should be no evidence, really, of any lead.
Yeah. Well, that's good to know, Mike. I didn't, you know, he just called and said that they did find lead, so they're gonna have to do it, because there's lead in the building. So that's all I was told. And I said to Joe, what's the guy's name that works with Joe? Angel? Angel is certified, he can do that, no cost to us. So I suggested let him test it, too, get a second, right? And the other issue you have, Mike, is the soffit that's up around here. I don't know if you noticed it, it is falling down. The soffit boards, if you look on this side especially, there's a lot of...
I didn't notice that, Jimmy.
We need to repair them, because they're all falling down. They're boards that go across the soffit. And either we gotta put a new trim to hold it up, but that's, we have to fix that, and I think that should be fixed. And that's, I was extremely surprised at the prices that came in, Mike. You know, they're talking about lifts, they're talking about this. I mean, I was shocked when 58,000 came in, and then the other one was...
38,000.
38,000. I suggested to Joe that we should still hunt around and look at some other prices, you know? We can't just go by those two. So I got some calls out of different painting companies that would come over here. The problem is that a lot of them are so far out, and I think you guys want to get it painted this year before winter. And I don't know if this, people out there that can fit this in this year, they're all talking about, we'll give you a quote, but the spring, right? Because they're so far up, there's nobody out there.
What's the rush?
That's what I said to Joe. I said, Joe, why don't we wait till the spring? I looked at it, it doesn't, looks like we can make it through the winter. It isn't that bad.
There's a few spots, I know there are, and I don't care what building you're looking at, there's gonna be a few spots here and there, but I don't think there's something that needs a rush down. And I think it's something that we need to look at.
Thank you.
There's no reason to have to do a total lead thing here. Some of this, some of this building was totally rebuilt without any lead on anything. So I think we need to do a little more investigation.
Okay. And why have you here? Another issue came up, and your name was brought up.
Jimmy, this is a different subject now?
This is the same building.
Okay.
It's the front doors. Joe wants to have those doors fixed, but he said you were against to do anything there, because the heat this winter is going out the door and Joe said he's frustrated on the benefit of heat. So I just wanna know your side of the story of why we don't wanna fix the cracks in the doors.
You, you see a couple of cracks in, in these original doors. This is a historic renovation.
Yeah.
It's not a new building.
Right.
And, uh, I don't know if we can make the repair on, on those doors. But to, to totally put on some new door on this historic renovation is, is, um, a sacrilege, to say the least.
Well, there was a, a guy here, Ken, when I say Ken, an older guy that Joe...
Great batch.
He's a woodworker?
Ken Greatbatch.
And he was gonna look at seeing how we could fix just the cracks in the door and keep the original door.
I'm not so sure they can.
Would you be, you're not sure they can?
The, the bottom part of the door, uh, the, um, where you step up on the...
Threshold.
I'm sorry, I can't think of what it's...
Yeah, the threshold.
The threshold, thank you. Uh, the, uh, has, has wear marks on it and that's why you see something on the bottom. And we tried to put scrapers on it and stuff like, but it does a covering. And, uh, for some reason or other, we, we probably should try to put a new threshold in, but, um, that entailed a huge...
Got it.
A huge renovation.
Yeah. I wasn't trying to get off the subject, Rob, but Joe was here and we were going around the whole building. He brought that up. And why have the opportunity to hear your side about the doors, I wanted to bring that up. But you should look at the soffit because that's gonna have to be...
If they need repair, we gotta repair them.
Correct. They're fa- they're gonna be falling off.
You know...
I think we should look at that, at least, Mike. If you look, you can put a trim and hold up the boards because they're just falling down. Um, we looked at it for that.
We, we need to investigate and what, what costs that and fix it.
Correct.
Definitely.
Some more investigation?
Yeah, and more time we need.
Yeah.
And as far as the back building, we haven't got any quotes on that, but the back wall is in tough shape. Um, under that clapboard is the bond board, original. It's kinda pungy, if you know what I mean. But we went inside, we felt the wood inside because Joe was talking about vinyl siding in that backside. And we were concerned if a nail would take to it because the board is soft. So the, the guy that came suggested that we put a sheet of like plywood over the whole wall, right? Cover up that bond board and then put the vinyl siding over that. We stripped the clapboard, plywood, and then vinyl.
Can't put vinyl siding around this building. It's got...
Not this. The, the garage door.
The garage door.
The very back of that building's pretty bad shape.
We, we, we have, the clapboards on there are cement, most of them.
I'm, I'm talking about the building behind...
On, on where the water suppression system is, uh, there's cement clapboards. On two, uh, the east side. Now, the, the back end of the building and the side of the building didn't get the, the, the cement.
Correct.
And, and the back end was hard to get to and it didn't seem to matter. But if they really think it's...
It's fallen off.
If, if it really thinks it's mattered, you can do anything you want to that building as long as you try to...
We're just gonna put some vinyl siding up there, I think. We're gonna get quotes.
If you, if, if you can keep the integrity of the building.
Got you. Yeah. So I think what we should do is give this time. I said to Joe, what Joe said, well, yeah, I think we should give it some more time. I think we need more investigation. I think it's not a big emergency that we should push this. And I think we should take that time about it. That's how I feel.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Go with that, Mike? Yeah, I think it's a good idea, right?
Moving on to the public hearing. Notice the public hearing. Town and Swansea Board of Select will hold the following public hearings pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety, decimal ninety-five dash eight. On Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. at Woodcombe Hall, Seventeen Main Street, Swansea, Hampshire. To hear testimony from the public regarding acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds as follows. Seventy-five thousand from the Madnock Alliance for Sustainable Transportation for sidewalk improvements on North Winchester and California streets. And a hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for expenses related to a declared disaster in twenty twenty-three. If you will be unable to attend, et cetera, posted July third, twenty twenty-four. Any thoughts, opinions?
Go ahead with the public hearing.
I did. It's an open public hearing.
Oh, yeah, good.
Then I read the notice there.
Good, good.
Yes, sir.
My name's Gordon Haga, Chairman of West Swansea. Thank you. So will this seventy-five thousand just be for the sidewalks for California and North Winchester Street?
It's towards, towards that overall project that we've been working on.
So it says here the sidewalks.
Right, yeah, towards the sidewalks on that overall project, correct.
So all seventy-five thousand go?
Correct.
Okay, because I know that we're part of the equation that you may ask us for more money, so...
Correct.
I'm just trying to get a feel of if this seventy-five is, once we get a number from you saying that it's gonna be a hundred fifty thousand for the sidewalks, then we may only have to come up with another seventy-five?
Correct. This would go towards, yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's all I needed?
It'd go towards the sidewalks on those two roads. Yes.
Yeah.
In, in, in doing these sidewalks, are you gonna do them the same as you did in South Winchester Street and replace the whole thing? Or are you gonna take out the blocks that are chipped or cracked or need replacement and take sections of it and add onto it at the end? And, and that was never clear to me on, on, uh, whether they were gonna press the, uh, sidewalk beyond the old Forest Avenue and past Bob's Garage or stop there at the old Forest Avenue and, uh, and, and just fix the ones that need fixing and the ones that are not in with the compliance of the sidewalk committee, which is five by five.
We would wanna work with the sidewalk committee on the scope of work, so, yeah, it was not, it wasn't in the budget to extend down to the end because we didn't get the full funding for the other grant. So it would just be the existing length of the sidewalk on North Winchester. It wouldn't be going to the end on California. And then we could look at, we were happy to look at the, the blocks if there's subsections that are in good shape and the sidewalk committee wants to save them. I don't, I don't think that would be a problem.
It's, it's a savings, uh, because a lot of them on South Winchester Street, you replace the whole thing. And a lot of them had already been replaced by the sidewalk committee a few years before and they weren't chipped or cracked. Like, they, they might need cleaning and taking care of the grass and up on the, uh, crack or stuff and, and getting, uh, the brush or something away from them. But, um, as far as the sidewalk is, was, the, the sidewalk was whole and in good shape. And, and, and I don't see any need to replace decent sidewalks when we've got other sidewalks in Swansea that we need. And, uh, we, like the one on Railroad Street and the one on Holbrook Avenue when we're gonna have to do Christian Hill. But there's a lot of these sidewalks and, and they need cleaning and, and remove, people walk, and they're walking through poisonability on some of these places and they need cleaning. And I, I, I think we need to, uh, put our money on the sidewalk committee at where we need to have it so it's best for the community, so they can walk with the sidewalk. And not necessarily new sidewalks, but good sidewalks.
Anything else?
Is that something the sidewalk committee would do? They'd walk down there, then evaluate this? Is that what you're saying? And then they, yeah, so they would do that?
Absolutely. And we decide, the sidewalk committee, but we decide, up on a driveway that might be a bunch of cracks in the cement, we would decide to replace those three or four, uh, five by fives. And, and then we'd go along and wherever there was a crack or a, a separation, we would replace a, a few more. But replacing, and, and we found out that replacing a section is probably cheaper than replacing just a couple. But in, in this situation on, uh, North Winchester Street, uh, from, uh, and I'm gonna call it, uh, Main Street instead of California Street, there's about, uh, probably eight to ten blocks there to get to some decent sidewalks again. So you'd take that one section and fix it. And then you'd leave them blank and you might have five or six and you replace that.
Would you match what's there?
You'd match, because they're five by...
It would just look like clean as cement, but the sidewalk would be uniform.
The, the five by five, that's what we go by.
Got it.
So at, at, at the end of Winchester Street up by Nicky Prakus'...
Yeah.
The sidewalk is a four-foot sidewalk, so we would replace that. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And they, and it stops right after George Nicky Prakus' house, uh, or thereafter before it gets to Forest Avenue or the old Forest Avenue, that Bob's Garage. Go ahead, you have something here.
On California Street, I believe that Christian says that we need granite curbing. So which would mean all the sidewalk would have to be replaced on California Street. I believe that was part of the, in order to get the grant, they require granite curbing. I believe back when we had a meeting when Sarah was, was the, here...
For the committee.
That she, that she said that, the grant money said that it had to be granite curbing, which I agree because we replaced that sidewalk probably ten years ago. We wanted to put granite curbing there at the time, but at that time, uh, Lee Dunn was the Public Works Director and he said that people would blow tires and stuff. If you had curbing there, people would fall down and, you know, the granite, the sidewalk would stay up, crack like it is now. So, I mean, I think at California, we would have to replace the whole sidewalk and put the granite curbing in. When do you guys use things like this? Do you get, do you get, how many people are involved in it? There's six people on the committee. Yeah? And we have a meeting and then people bring up that, you know, that, you know, a lot of the people walk the sidewalks and say that, you know, over on California Street or Holbrook Ave, there's, there's some broken sidewalks or we need to take care of this or people that we know that walk, will come to us and say, you know, there's a problem on the sidewalk here and there. And then we hold a meeting and then we just all take a vote to see, you know, what we're gonna do if we approve it, you know, we should do it or not. And then you bring it here and then... Well, no, actually, we just, we, existing sidewalks, we just take care of it ourselves without going to anyone because it's...
The sidewalk committee operates off of the Snow Fund, which is a sidewalk committee for just West Swansea.
Got it.
And they can't be, these funds can't be spent in any other part of the town. And all of the people on this committee are from West Swansea. And so you see a committee member, you can ask, tell them your concerns. We've got concerns. And we know what they are. We're trying to have enough money to fix a few of the bad spots. And you, we always tell them we have enough money, uh, to fix all of the concerns. Uh, and, and that's probably because of our bad management.
Is that something I can go with the committee and see and somebody could tell me?
Oh, definitely.
I would love to see it with my own eyes so I could see what... Maybe I could get contacted when you guys go out there and I could take a little tour of that?
Yeah.
Anytime.
Yeah.
I'd love to do that.
Not, not a problem.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing and adjourn the motion.
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
About the FEMA funds. Are they allocated towards any work on Swansea Lake?
No, I believe the, uh, is that FEMA gonna be done at Thompson Bridge?
Right, so this is for work that was completed largely last year.
To reimburse.
So it's reimbursing the town for that work.
So it has nothing to do with the storm damage or...
What has to do with the storm damage?
From July last year.
Right.
So we rebuilt East Shore Road and places like that.
So you're just kind of reimbursing...
Reimbursing the town's account.
What's the, what's the plan for the watershed for Swansea Lake?
There's a meeting this Saturday, uh, nine A M., ten A M., here, uh, sort of after one, what's that, Garrett?
I think it's nine A M.
Nine A M.
If I remember having to plan that.
Where they'll be presenting on a study that they've been working on.
Gentlemen's name, please?
Craig Peterson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then we'll have to, once we get the final, we have a draft report, but once we have the finalized report, I'd be happy to share with you on the website.
Yeah. Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, now I'll close the public hearing and adjourn the motion.
I'll make that motion.
I did actually, more preferably, but I'd like to add that I'll be authorized to sign the grant agreement with MAST.
I'll make that motion. That's a bad add.
Wanted in the motion, I move to accept unanticipated funds as outlined above.
And authorize the town administrator to sign grant agreements with MAST and the expenditure one eighty-nine...
One eighty-nine eighty-six sixty from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for repairs to the bridge on Devon Thompson. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Ayes have it.
We do expect significantly more on the way for FEMA as well. They break it out by different projects. I think like some of this was Talbot Hill. Um, so they, it comes in in kind of drafts, so we'll probably have another, another hearing at some point.
Okay, can you talk about Talbot Hill a little bit and what the plan is for that or do you not?
That was, this was the maintained section of Talbot Hill. I assume you're wondering about the...
The other part?
I was under the impression that you didn't have any jurisdiction to maintain that road because it's a Class VI road?
So on the other side by Swan...
On the other side?
Is maintained, but you're correct about the section of the metal. It's Class VI, so that is not maintained.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? So there's property owners that surround the Class VI road. And right now, it's really just a dried-up riverbed. It's really not a road. It's not passable. Hypothetically, if I went and I knocked on the, the owner's door and said, "Hey, uh, what if I pay you, uh, and I'll, I'll, or I'll pay for it, but I'll get an excavator up there and we do some work on that and divert the water away from my house?" Can I, can I do something like that?
So any improvements would still need town approval?
For grading?
For maintaining the Class VI road. And if you're diverting water, you would need to drain it easily.
Okay. All right.
So in theory, maybe, but it probably wouldn't be...
Yeah, no, I'm just curious because I don't know how it, it works with Class VI roads and, and you don't have jurisdiction to do any work on there, but the homeowners have to apply for a permit and...
Right. Yeah, we have, we have, we have others where it's more, uh, more common, like Sycamore, Sycamore Hill near like Swansea Neighbors Gas Station. That's a Class VI road that the neighbors maintain routinely because there's several houses on it. So it's, it's not...
So essentially like, kind of like a private...
Except they, except the public has a right of way to use it and they need town, basically, permission to do the improvements.
Got you. Okay.
So it's kind of, it's quasi. It's like half, half private.
Just trying to understand how, how it all works.
Yeah. It's confusing.
Yes.
Shall we go back to waterline extension to that valley beach?
Sure. And I'd see Mr. Kindler. Let's see, we have the chairman of the North Swansea Precinct here. Did you wanna join us up here? I know you folks discussed the, their estimate, right, for the waterline extension?
Uh, we did in a fairly preliminary way. Uh, we, obviously, you know, looking at the costs outlined and, uh, obviously a little higher than originally anticipated. Uh, the reason being, according to the superintendent, uh, that, uh, they basically, the original estimate was based on six-inch pipe running, uh, six-inch main running to it, uh, you know, and serving it. And, uh, apparently the state of New Hampshire requires an eight-inch minimum. And that's gonna boost this. And, uh, there was discussion, although in a very oblique way, of even possibly making it a ten-inch, uh, main, which would boost the price even higher than what we were shown in this estimate from, uh, from Alatech, which, uh, was based on the, I believe, the eight-inch.
Unfortunately, going from six to eight didn't, didn't increase it as much as I thought it would.
I know, I saw it. It's in here.
Yes, it's in here.
I'm sorry. It was two sixty-two, wasn't it, the first one?
Two eighty.
Two eighty-eight?
Yeah, so that was about twenty, twenty-five last year.
That didn't work as much as I thought for.
No.
What was the original estimate? I don't think...
Two sixty-two.
Okay, so, yeah, actually, that is remarkably small increase given the... Okay, so, yeah, actually, that is remarkably small increase given the anticipation of the eight-inch cut to a line of waterline extension. But again, there is also discussion or has been some discussion of maybe even making it 10, which is gonna bring in a new estimate, which is also going to be higher than this one. How much higher? We'll hear from Alatech.
Would there be value in going to a 10-inch for future expansion or would an eight-inch?
The superintendent would be better equipped to answer that question and he is sitting at the table there, so. He's the one that asked.
I'll put on the superintendent hat. The elevation is getting up there. We're kind of, the elevation of the Tammy King. So, like on Route 12, we can only go with page homestead housing. On Route 32, basically that crest of that hill is probably yet, might be able to go over the top, but I don't see it happening.
To where, do you mean? To what, with building his way?
Yeah, I mean, it's still, there's some elevation and then it drops down and then pops back up again, so. I'd have to see elevation maps to see what it would, actually would be, but I think that elevation right at that site of Alatech's project is probably the max. And the precinct is just put out in RFQ for engineering for a forgivable loan that we hopefully can get, pay for it, to design, replacing our water mains with 10 and 12-inch pipe. That's estimated at $5.7 million.
So, when we look at the extensions coming across from Route 12, where it's extension currently, would we have the ability with this extension along 32 to potentially create a tie-in to support the residential going in, like for example, off of Arrow Crest? As they come over the hill towards?
If there was a water tanker there.
We'd have to have a tanker.
Yeah. Underwood, 20 years ago, did a design or estimate of where it would be booster pump stations or elevated storage tanks to give us some pressure for up there. But we would have appropriate capacity with a 10-inch pipe if, if it continued down Route 32 to Swansea Center and beyond, so.
Great.
But that's probably a long time.
A long time.
Time goes by faster.
Yeah.
Way to get to my age.
Like it's something.
Way to get to mine. I'm right there, Paul. Well, knock on the door.
So, what's your preference with this?
Yeah, previously, he was looking for help with half, which now half is more. I don't know if I need still half or the same amount he was looking for before, but does the precinct have any, I don't know which one of you, but does the precinct have funds towards line extensions? Is that something you might contribute towards or?
Um, whether we would contribute toward, that is something which the board commissioners will take into advisement. We have no set belief one way or the other, at least no stated belief. I'm sure each member has their own opinions, but we haven't actually, you know, formulated it into a motion, do we wanna, you know, how do we wanna, where do we actually stand on that? And, you know, once we get a little more solid information about how much Alatech wants toward, you know, wants from the precinct toward this project, we could have a better idea of, you know, what we'd be voting to support or not support.
The connection fee to recapture infrastructure costs could work into that too. The commissioners might, look at doing something with that.
I don't see that factored into his budget, maybe it was factored in somewhere else or?
Wouldn't be factored into this budget.
No, I guess, the project budget. I don't think he knows to ask one group versus the other, I think he's just asking in general, so.
Yeah, because I'm a little confused, we know that he wants us to come up with 50%, and he's gonna come up with 50%, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure, you need more information and come up with your decision on how you would participate in this.
Well, he wants 50% from the town, presumably some of that 50% would come out of, would come from the precinct.
Well, then, the town's 50%, some of that would hopefully come from the precinct as well.
Well, that's what I said, that's what I said. You know, the question is, first of all, you have to know whether the town is on board with, you know, chipping in 50% and they're, you know, if they are. Actually, all the town can do is say, we would like the precinct to chip in as part of the 50%. Hopefully, the town can give us a figure as to how much they want the precinct to throw in. Is it gonna be 50/50 for the 50% and on the reset side 25%?
25/25?
Uh, but, you know, until we get some hard numbers, it's a little hard for the precinct to make, you know, to make an exact, you know, opinion. You know, first of all, we gotta go out and see how much we've got and, you know, determine how much of it we're willing to give up toward this project. Or even if the precinct is willing to give up any at all, because, you know, we could just turn around, you know, in theory, could just turn around and say, no, we don't think that the obligation on this falls on the town. But again, that's, that's a matter for discussion later. I'm not speaking for anybody but myself on that and all I'm saying is, we gotta talk about it.
So, if, if the town is to connect and Alatech is to connect, what additional fees do they have other than the tie-in fee? Is there any infrastructure that needs to be handled?
Just that water main to get there because it's in the street. It would be on the property of the water precinct. But, once it gets there, anything that's on the property, like valves, any connections to the buildings, the meters usually get bought by the homeowner or the property owner, things like that.
So, the actual connection, those valves, is that the connectee or the, or is that you?
Connectee, so.
Okay, so what would our cost be roughly? Just, just to do that part, just to connect that, not the fee to connect, but the valves needed?
Well, you would run, basically, this is a cost to get it down at the site on the road. Coming in from the road, there would be probably a four or six-inch main to go for the fire suppression. And then water lines to each building in 32 units. I think he's got four buildings, so we'd have a water line for each one of those, shut offs, things like that. Whatever building goes to the Swansea block, depending on what it is, would be the same, you know, four or six-inch fire line and whatever service drops. It's hard estimate.
No, I understand. Sometimes it can be quite extreme.
Which is 75,000, I think, right? If we split that with that, 75,000 needs to stop. So, you're just telling me that, once you get that main out the road to get to the departments, that's an additional cost on this project to meet the town debt? So, what does he actually pay for?
Our person to you?
Would it be his property with you?
It's his. It's his.
Oh, it is?
He pays the tie-in fee.
Okay.
And then it's his responsibility to connect the line and bring it on his property.
This estimate goes from the end of our precinct line down to the front of its front.
Got you.
From there and it's on the property.
And the only revenue this brings in will ever hook up and it goes to precinct money. So, the town right now, we see nothing back from this estimate.
So, do we know, do we know if the line comes to the town property as part of this estimate?
I'm guessing it's pretty close, but I don't worry actually either.
So, the one benefit that we do have is we're gonna bring water to that property that we own, that we thought we would put the fire station. So, that will bring up the value of that property because now we have town water for that property, right?
And so.
And so, so, how much does that bring up property? Does it bring up property quite a bit when you sell it? Would you, would you know, can it bring up property?
It certainly can.
Good?
Depending upon what goes there from that, from the standpoint of the sprinkler system.
Right, if it goes there, they don't have to get tanks and that. Because if they don't have it, they have to get all the tanks and all that stuff, right?
They might still have to have tanks. Might have to have a tank or, depending on complications.
But they also might have to become a public water supply, which is no small matter either.
For 32 units, I think you would.
Right.
I think that would well or to become a public water supply.
That would be the same thing with the, with the lot too, planning it what winter then. If you've gotta become a water, public water supply, it's not just a simple well and a couple hoses. Now it's testing and there's other, other stuff, so I mean, it's, you know.
I was just trying to weigh out benefits of the town is to make this investment and we're gonna exceed it back.
Absolutely, absolutely, one percent.
Legitimacy, you know, it's a big investment. What do you think, Bill?
I think we should do it.
You think we should do it?
Because we'll get the back if we sell it.
And you're saying split the 50%, that we have left, put it on the table, now he goes back and sees if he'll take care of the other 25%? Is that what you're asking?
I think it's like, I don't know.
What's, what's suggestion that we put up the 25%, you guys put up 25%, there's the 50%, right? The 50% is-
That was my understanding, that, that that would, that that would be the arrangement. Unless anybody had some other formula in mind, but it would make sense that we'd be talking town, town 25% and precinct 25%. But again, that's subject to action by the precinct committee, the commissioners.
Where would this money come to invest at each per unit of affordable housing grant? Or the 10, 10th Ferry Lane property? So, how would we go about that? With the motion on the table that we would go with ours 25% of not exceeding a certain amount of money like, yeah, where?
I think we have to find out whether precinct would-
Wait, hopefully do that, right? We'll tell them, we'll just tell them that we'll go in together.
We also need to find out whether this, whether this estimate is gonna hold or whether we're going to, you know, how much more it's gonna cost if we go to 10-inch. And, you know, if the developer wants to go 10-inch, you know, we, he, he doesn't have any choice about going to 8 inches, that's, that's a statement in date. But if, you know, if for various reasons we want to go to 10 inches, that's gonna bring in a new and higher estimate, of which then we have to figure out our 25% or your 25%.
Well, two inches brought us up $26,000, so if you add another two inches, maybe you're probably saying another $20,000.
Hopefully.
Right, well, you know, so now you're at 300-some thousand dollars. What is, what was your answer on it? What does it benefit us from the 10 inches? Does it benefit us? I wasn't really understanding that. Would you suggest we would go with the 10 inches if we did this project?
No, only in the fact that it's the end of the line and the elevation issue.
Oh.
If it was in the middle of the precinct and it was a flat run, you know, whoever hooked down down the road would not have a problem with the elevation and pressure. I would say yes. Whereas at the end of the line, I think eight-inch would probably be sufficient, so.
Probably also bears noting that in the event the fire station actually goes on the land being held for that purpose, to have this project split 50/50 right now is gonna save the town a fair bit of money because if we extended the fire station, town's gonna have to pay for, I mean, the extension in addition to whatever the precinct chips in, but that's not gonna be 50 and 50.
I don't think we can put that in that scenario right now because I think we gotta deal, play the cards that we got right now that the fire station ain't gonna be there. I, I just don't think, it's a change, you know what I mean, Bill? I think we should look at it that the fire station ain't gonna be there if we're gonna make this. And that's why I asked, how much value would bring that land? If we didn't do the fire station, we sold it, you know?
I, I, I agree with you, Jimmy, it's, you know, right, you know, we've had too many no votes on this.
Yeah.
And I don't, and my own feeling, you know, as a journalist and having analyzed this over the portion, you know, over several years of trying, you take the firefighters out of the vote and it's a 50/50 split down the middle by the town.
Yeah.
If the firefighters are not included in that vote, because they're all reporting no back.
Oh, absolutely, we know, we know that.
So, you know, I, I agree with you, the likelihood of the fire station going there is-
I don't think we want to continue with that discussion.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you, Bill.
I, I think we, we consider that as the worst option. We, we don't want to go a little much further with that.
Absolutely.
I'm inclined to agree with you.
So, we have a meeting August 19th?
August 19th, yes.
Precinct Select, the Commissioners. Do you wanna invite Alatech to propose something to that or? Because right now, we don't have any proposal from them, so to speak. We have the estimate, but there's not what they're looking for.
It's just the verbal ways asked for now.
Right.
So, you, you said not push for the 10, correct? So, just can be with this estimate, is that?
Yeah, either way. I, just my opinion, based on the elevation and everything, I think it is efficient at the end of the line.
If, if it did go to 10, I think we would have to absorb that additional cost because it's not a requirement for him.
And would that benefit us?
It would, yeah, potentially.
Potentially, now that's a point. Yeah.
I also think with what you said with regard to, or both of you, with regard to hiring a consultant to determine what your, your long-term needs are in increasing your pipes to 10 and 12, would, would that factor in here or not? But you guys would know more on that.
Well, we have, first of all, we have to talk about that because we don't have, you know, a long-term master plan per se. And certainly, consultant's lie, the more, consultant's lie as to what he, as the expert in this, believes we would need long-term and, you know, but the idea that one, you know, if we get too carried away with this, we're getting into, you know, pump stations and tanks and all kinds of other ancillary costs that we probably are not in a position right now, right now, to, you know, to talk about.
I think 10 inches down the line, but not now.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And the question is, right now, we're working, as you pointed out, let's work with what we got.
Let's try to-
What we've got right now is an eight-inch, is an eight-inch pipe and, you know, let's, let's not shoot for a Rolls-Royce when we've got a Cadillac.
Yeah, I mean, I think we came up with an answer that we would be agreeable, to split the 50% with precinct, right?
I think we bring that back to the commissioners and see what they're, is any chance of meeting before that or? At one point, he was somewhat anxious, although he also didn't come tonight, so.
Sure. It depends on how urgent the town considers this issue. Theoretically, we can call it, you know, we can call it a, a special meeting anytime. Getting us all together is sometimes a problem. Gus and I never had any problem, but-
Get this registered.
Brian is, you know, on the road, seems like half his life. And we'd have to, you know, find a date that he could be there because we obviously, this is something we'd have to talk about. You know, all three of us need to talk about it.
Mike, can I just interrupt for a second? What was the concern that Joe had about putting it in? The company that puts it in, maybe he brought up a concern?
He just wanted to make sure that somebody that was experienced in installing-
That's a little wise, right? To make sure we put it back together and the road, because we would be digging up the road or next to the road.
Next to the road.
Yep.
The whole wood.
Yeah. I just forgot what Joe, I knew Joe had concerns with this whole thing, I just wanted to make sure.
Would it be helpful for him if we agreed to pay half the cost with the understanding that we're approaching the precinct to share in that cost? Because if we, if we- Because if we, if we go to the nineteenth meeting and the precinct says no, and we haven't made a decision, other than that we're paying twenty-five percent.
At times, I'm like, I'll put you on the spot, but you've had more discussions of them. I know at times this was somewhat urgent, but then he also didn't come to that. You have a sense of how time sensitive it is for him, but I just, I was thinking that's literally a full line.
I just, I just don't think, yeah, I don't think it would be, it should be too difficult by next Wednesday to have an actual written request, a number that you guys could agree on. I think that would be, you know.
We'll meet next Wednesday, do it.
Okay, the Wednesday after.
Wednesday after.
From him?
Yeah, and have a written request.
I mean, you gotta, I mean, I, I don't know what you're looking at. I mean, you got a number in front of you to those points?
It's just a.
Yeah, procedurally, I mean, it's more of a procedural thing. I, I mean, I, this is, it's, I urged and urged and urged him to come in for months, for months, because this, I was worried about this happening and everybody being put in a bad spot. And that's where we are and I don't know what else to say than that. You know, it's, it's a decision up to you guys, but I don't think having a written request is, is a lot to ask, but if you got to wait two weeks, I don't know where that, where that puts the whole project, but, I mean, this is about a key component of the project. I, I, I finally had to almost grab the sprinkler guy by the cheeks and go, you understand they haven't agreed to this. You're going to start putting in sprinklers based on numbers that no one's agreed to. You know that. You know what you're doing here. I don't know what else to do other than that. I mean, it's an important component, it's the frigging water, so, you know what I mean?
We want to have a 50 percent and hopefully they put it in there so we can move this along.
But, but this is late. Yeah, and Mike's are saying people actually have.
I just don't, I, I'm asked for a few times, I just don't know if we've got a written request, we got this verbal, I just don't know.
Two weeks is a long time. If he does seem to come up with that, I think, I think that's very reasonable, quite reasonable for what they're asking, right? I know what it means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to stick to the.
I was just asking because I know you've talked to.
Yeah, and, and I understand and appreciate it. He's a good guy, it's just not his, it's not his thing.
I think it's very reasonable, getting two weeks.
Consensus?
Very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Paul, good job.
We're going to request a written request.
Thank you, Paul.
And the rain stopped, Paul.
Thank you, Wishley.
Every time you bring it, it stops.
We appreciate it.
I brought mine. Unfortunately for you, because no guarantee that by the time you guys are done, you're going to be back.
Think, think of us.
I'm going to see you Saturday. And Paul? All right, next up we have a boundary line adjustment from Southwest Community Services. Boundary line on Main Street between Station Three by Station Three property or thirty-four Main Street and Swansea Township housing, which would add over three acres to the Station Three property. Keith had brought this up.
Yeah, this has been in the works for a few years now, so we've got a copy of the proposed acreage, so it's mainly adding kind of access acreage, access to their property, but also give some nice riverfront property, maybe there's potential for trails. Also could be some maybe a training area, maybe out back somewhere, so. It's a very generous donation by, by Southwest Community Services, so it's planned to go before the planning board in August, so.
Maybe just enough for that.
Oh, it's going to go in front of the planning board.
Right. I think we'll probably have to do the forty-one fourteen A process to accept the acreage as well, so probably a couple of public hearings too.
Great. Any questions?
Do we have any, any expense?
We're also going to some of the transaction costs.
Some of the title and surveying and?
Yep.
Administrative update.
You had asked after last meeting about some information about kind of form of, form of government stuff, so I included information about charter towns, charter commission. Last, last spring, there was a lot of discussion about five member board selections, so I've just included a little about the charter government, there's one option to look at charters versus just increasing the scope. You can look at kind of the whole form of government, do you want, what do you want to go before town meeting? Do you want to have S B two? So just some slides from an N H M A presentation on that and then how you had asked about the town manager statute, so I included an article from, also from N H M A.
Were the Bolton Borough?
They did not approve a charter commission. Yeah, I don't think, don't think they even, so you create a commission and then people get elected to it and then they would propose a form of government that the voters would then have to approve again, I don't think.
So it takes like two years, two election cycles to get through that.
But it gives you more custom, customize, customizability versus just town deal or S B two, you can kind of tailor it a little bit.
So we, we would collectively just authorize the commission, people would, would apply, sign up to?
It actually would be a special election, so if it gets approved.
So we wouldn't wait till March?
It would be.
The commission would be, the concept would be approved in March?
Right.
And then there would be a special election?
Right.
And that's where that additional cost comes in?
Correct.
Okay. And is it that same timeline that Bolton Borough followed?
I believe, I believe it, yeah, I believe it, it's like a May, would be a May election.
Yeah.
So just food for thought, you know, before we get into the full, full budget season.
Good reading.
Yeah, same stuff.
It's not the easiest reading.
Better than the Swansea Lake Management Plan?
Oh, that one's not.
Any correspondence?
That was exhausting, that's a good word for it.
Oh, what kind of correspondence, kind of administrative, I just put it that we're kicking off the C I P process again. Bill is honored to serve on the C I P committee, so just taking the opportunity to mention to the board, if your projects that you want to make sure, primary dia is D A facility, road bridges, and you don't see them in the plan, maybe next meeting we can have an agenda and just make sure, make sure we know, because, you know, different times, things come up as, oh, we'd like to do this, but we'd like to work them in the plan too if we can, make sure we got funding for them. So maybe just break this on the bottom.
Were the gutters completed?
The gutters were completed today.
They were tested just a little while.
They were tested.
It seemed to have, I didn't actually go out, but feeling pretty good about my chances.
Mike's office doesn't have a window, so by the time the rain had stopped, he didn't know what was starting.
I didn't even know it was raining.
He's like, oh, the rain stopped, he's like, what rain?
Yeah, that's true, actually.
See those puddles?
I didn't have, didn't know.
So while we're talking about the premise, I understand that you started chilling, but naturally you've had conversations about this with him, about the back of the building, talking about the ramp. We're going to take that, take that out. I just, Joe just mentioned to me, we're going to dig down and when we dig down, when we get there, why don't we put our drainage in around the foundation at the same time? And we kill two birds with one stone.
Sure.
Because we got to dig down behind that building and we could put some drainage on to around the bottom base and maybe even seal that up with some membrane or something, the foundation.
Good idea.
Good idea?
Good idea.
I just figured we're going to be in there digging and I'd like to add to it that I'd like to see us, while we have the machinery there, address that wall where the fire trucks come out, because someday that wall is going to fall there. You never know, it could fall on the day that we need to get the fire truck out, which chances are hitting me, you know, mega bucks, but it's there. I don't know if that's something you guys might want to throw into the mix, that we try to repair that piece of wall, we, we have the machinery there, because the only thing that's holding that up is that metal rod, right?
Well, it's actually not holding it up, they told them up about four square feet.
Correct. The only part that stayed in place is that metal rod.
That's all it told me.
The rest of the wall's coming down.
That's correct.
I don't know, I, I know money, we've got to be careful.
That is in the plan, that, that's in the fire station facility plan, so that's something that's in the plan.
Okay.
I don't know if this, the money is right, but we have, we have a place.
I got you for it.
Just a silver pipe going out to the leach field behind that wall?
Yeah, it's, it's a ways behind it, yeah. It's, I mean, yeah, it's, it's not at a good pitch unfortunately, it's one of the reasons the toilets in town don't really flush well. Yeah, it's back there.
And I understand that the interior now, we will be covered with some insurance money for the interior, the catalyst back and all the stuff with the fire station, right?
Sounds like, yeah.
Between the gutters and I was thinking now, I think we're going to solve the problem.
There we go.
That was, that was close.
So we'll just do public input? One last bite of the apple, anybody? Yes, sir?
Do we have a timeframe on when California, the north, we maybe at?
Fully twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. So that's not off the dead curve, so we don't have these numbers due.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any doubt publics?
Yes, for reputation.
Most, most of the children?
No.
Not publics. Most of the, under eight.
He wants to go.
Second.
Did you guys? They, they, they?
Get care of it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Everybody can come out okay, Jack? Tom Marcy bringing you up. Tom Marcy yesterday bringing you up.